Call to order, Ms. Santiago, please call the row.
Ms. Stollings?
Here.
Ms. Glanville?
Here.
Karen Taylor?
Present.
Julio Flores?
Here.
Michael Bresch.
Here.
Robert Cordo Jr.
Juan Hernandez.
Here.
Kimberly Oliver.
Here.
Richard Waring.
Here.
We have four.
Thank you. Let me just go into this. Good evening and welcome. Before we start, I'd like to go over a few ground rules for this meeting. This is a public hearing on the superintendent's recommended budget. All public comments should be related to this budget. Any public comments should be kept until... Any other public comment should be kept until the regular meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak may address the board for a total of three minutes. At two minutes, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute to wrap up. At the sound of the bell, your three minutes are up. We have...I'm not sure how many speakers we have tonight. I didn't look at the list. But please be respectful of all speakers' times. And when your time runs out, please submit your comments... If your time runs out, you're welcome to submit your comments in writing. We ask that you have no boisterous conduct shall be permitted. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar language or indecent language. No signs allowed inside board meetings. Speakers may not yield their time to other speakers. Speakers must refrain from naming employees, but I can't enforce that, so please be respectful. And this is a difficult budget season, and we encourage your input. Please be respectful. And Mr. Flores will read the same announcement in Spanish. Mr. Flores.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos. Antes de comenzar, queremos establecer las reglas para esta reunión. Esta es una audiencia pública del presupuesto recomendado por la superintendente. Todos los comentarios de hoy deben ser estar relacionados a este presupuesto. Cualquier otro comentario debe esperar hasta la próxima reunión regular de la junta. Cada miembro del público que quiera hablar puede dirigirse a la junta por un total de tres minutos. Al final de dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre para dejarle saber que le queda un minuto para concluir. Cuando suene el timbre por segunda ocasión, significa que se acabaron sus tres minutos. Tenemos muchas personas que quieren hablar esta noche. Así que, por favor, seamos respetuosos del tiempo de los demás. Si no les da tiempo, pueden entregar sus comentarios por escrito. No se permite conducta ruidosa. El tiempo...el límite de tiempo será aplicado estrictamente. No se permiten ataques personales contra individuos. No se permite el lenguaje vulgar o soés. No se permiten letreros dentro del salón de la junta de la reunión de la junta. Una persona no puede cederle su tiempo disponible a otra persona. No se deben mencionar empleados por nombre. Este es un periodo de presupuesto difícil, y queremos escuchar sus observaciones, pero, por favor, mantengamos el respeto. Si necesita traducción al español, tenemos audífonos, y la señora Marta Ventan está disponible para ayudarle.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. And the chair will recognize Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Good evening, Chairman Stollings, Vice Chair Glanville, Secretary Flores, other board members, staff, and the community. I know that in previous budget hearings, we just go directly to public comment, but I wanted to just take a few minutes to call to mind, one, the challenging budget context in which we're in, and also to refocus on the main areas in which the budget development process focused on. We in Hartford Public Schools remain focused on serving the needs of each and every one of our students. And in order to do that, our resources must respond to the diverse population, including the high number of our English learners as well as our special education students, as well as the many students who live in poverty. And when we think about our strategic operating plan, you know, it does provide a vision and the key priorities that are focused on student success. And although we've had some progress...we had progress last year. It certainly isn't enough. You know, we still have our students that have achievement gaps at all grade levels and in all of our subgroups. And in order to accelerate progress, we have to make sure that our resources are intentionally responding to our student needs. And we have to create those conditions to not only improve our student outcomes, but to be able to sustain that progress. And what I mean by sustaining the progress is that we have resources that are going to carry us year after year in terms of our improvement for our students. The challenge that we have is that, you know, the budget represents a stark reality that has been years in the making. Several factors are kind of coming together and are now creating this unsustainable model for us to operate. Last year, if you recall, we did have a deficit of $30.2 million, which resulted in 235 reductions in terms of positions. You think about eight years of flat or reduced funding. And at the same time, we continue to experience increasing costs associated with not only our programs, but programs that service our special education students. And then there are the implications that are connected to our chef versus O'Neill stipulation, which is, you know, increased under enrollment in some schools, and our students are having access to some of those opportunities. Add to that the fact that many of our facilities are aged facilities, and we certainly have to tend to those facilities. And we don't have the enrollment for those, for all of our facilities. And of course, we all know the challenging context that our city and the state are facing in terms of finances. And so, the big picture for us, you know, when we look at the broad overview, we have the increasing costs of $13.6 million, the decrease in revenue of $12.6, which results in a gap of $26.2 million. And while I wish that I were here not to talk about the deficit, I wish we weren't here to talk about the many achievement gaps that we have to close. But that's our reality, and so we have to make sure that we think about that as we continue to develop this budget. We have a commitment to ensure that all of our students, each and every one of our students, is served. And there is not one answer to the serious dilemma in which we all are facing. There is not one budgetary solution. This budget is not going to address all of our needs. These conditions, if you will, have multiplied over the years. And this budget does not recommend any new programming. This budget recommends the bare essentials. And still, those essentials are going to be missing in this budget. We want to focus on literacy and numeracy. We want to focus on accelerating improvements in our lowest-performing schools, in our neighborhood schools. We want to commit to using data so that it can inform how it is that we're going to change and narrow in on those priorities. And we want to make sure that we meet the social and emotional needs of our students so that they come to school not only feel supported academically, but emotionally as well. And lastly, we have to make sure that we remain committed to having solid, authentic partnerships with our families and with our community. This is a very difficult budget. It is frustrating. It is...there's a lot of uncertainty with this budget. And it's challenging not having enough to do the bare minimum that we need to do. And so, I want to thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts and your concerns with us tonight. Chairman Stollings.
Well, are you going to...are you ready for your presentation? Okay, all right. Then the chair will recognize Ms. Glanville, who will begin public comment. And as I stated before, we have three minutes for each speaker.
Thank you. So first, we have Afrika S. Heinz.
Good evening, Chairman Stollings. Superintendent Torres Rodriguez. My name is Afrika S. Heinz. I'm a Hartford resident. I'm a homeowner. I'm a Weaver High School graduate, a Jacob and Lewis Fox Scholar, a bachelor's science degree from Syracuse University, and a master's of public health from the University of Connecticut. I fully endorse maintaining full-time teachers at the Adult Education Center on Washington Street in Hartford. I encourage the board to thoroughly consider the long-term impact of shifting from full-time teachers to part-time teachers and take with them into their decision-making process the following points. Maintaining full-time teachers at Adult Education Center has no fiscal impact on the present level-funded budget, but a significant negative impact on the community of the adults who need and use the valuable resources of these teachers. The budget, as submitted for your consideration, has minimal changes and can be considered level funding. The budget request from the principal is not seeking less funding based on having part-time teachers than the year before. Thus, what happens to the additional funds that are saved from salaries and benefits? When a budget is submitted at level or flat funding, it suggests that the teaching staff can and will stay in place with all benefits thereof. There seems to be no or little cuts to support staff. How realistic is it for you to have no full-time teachers, but require the same amount of full-time support? The full-time support staff can receive a full-time salary and benefits, but licensed educators are not afforded the same consideration or respect for their profession? Who impacts these students the most? Fourth point. The school system established that each school would have a governance council to ensure that parents, students, and community would have a voice. I am the voice of the tax-paying community and those who have been silenced. The school's student governance council voted this budget down. The student governing council sent a message to the administration that this is not what they want? What happened to the voices that they represent? Why are they being ignored when they have used the instrument that was put forth in place by this district? In addition to the community, the students have set a petition with 500-plus signatures attesting to the fact that this is not what they want for their teachers themselves or their school? Don't they have a voice? Changing your staffing levels from full-time to part-time will not...will have the following long-term ripple effect. Loss of income for teachers means seeking additional employment to supplement income. And once again, Hartford loses valuable talents because it has not assessed a situation accurately. Staff families will need to fiscally adjust. In some cases, there are single-parent households with part-time salaries, and no one can live off of that. Student families will have less access to teaching talents and resources of staff, which may become discouraging to them to continue on to their path to success. The district pays 35% of the adult education budget, and the state pays 65%. It is understood that the dollars are federally reimbursed to the state if certain federal criteria are met. In changing the staff to part-time, the state stands to lose federal funding because of ineligible staffing, which fiscally impacts this district at some point. And finally, the board reached that there's no teacher involvement with this budget. I truly hope you consider these seven points shared with you today before coming to a final decision. Every decision has a lasting impact, so make the decision that your decision will have a positive impact on your talented teachers, your successful students, and your caring community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Louis Delgado.
Thank you. Peace.
Peace.
I'm here to speak about something that troubles me greatly when I think about it. And it makes me feel like...like I'm not that smart, you know? And I hate feeling like that. This thing right here are very close to the words that Beth Narves used to disrespect this community, okay? And it bothers me when I read "Cultivating Equity and Excellence" because I've spoken to some of you privately and about new visions. The school for expelled students. I'm uncomfortable with the idea that our children have to attend a school like that. They don't have anything that's remotely close to what the other students receive. They don't have a gym. The facility is rundown. Some of the custodians that are professionals in their job have called it unfit for human occupancy. These are people that I respect. And I'm sure...I'd be willing to bet my right hand, like the saying goes, that none of your children, if you have children in our school district, that that school is not fit for any of your children. And here goes my confusion. Herein lies my confusion, okay? If that school is not good enough for your children, why in the hell is it good enough for our children? We want our children, okay? When you talk about cultivating equity and excellence, you should never put stuff out like this unless you mean it, unless you're serious about it. Our children in the school that...I wouldn't put my dog in, you know? And I'm very upset about that because I don't see the Board of Ed moving to do anything about that. And I'm talking about like, this should have been done months ago. As soon as we brought it to your attention, some of you have visited that facility? You know the degradable conditions that it's in? And I'm going to keep coming to these meetings and harping about this? And I'm going to go to the city council? And I'm going to go...I'm going to call the State Commissioner of Education? I'm going to try to set fire to this Board of Ed until you do something about that. And just to finish, I also agree with the comments that this other woman made before me because we have a large segment of our population, particularly, okay, non-English speakers, okay, that benefit greatly from that, and they move on to college and things like that. So, like she said, please make sure that you do your homework before you make a decision like that. Thank you.
Takianna Tucker. Takianna Tucker, no? Hi, Cynthia Nee.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As always, thanks for serving. We all know this is a thankless job, so I want to let you know that we appreciate you doing it. I'm here because I want to talk about something, a couple of things. We are in a dire time, a needy time. And, you know, for years, I've been coming to school board meetings to talk about, why are we building so much buildings? And, you know, well, the state give us the money, so we have to build. Okay, you don't have to build, okay? And now, we're in a position where we have so many buildings and not enough kids, all right? So, I'm looking at...you've got to get serious about this. We have to consolidate, all right? One of the issues I have is that we've bused our kids out of the neighborhood, out of their neighborhood, all right? As you look at South End School, they're overcrowded, okay? And we need to stop doing that because the money that we're using to bus these kids out of their neighborhood, we could have actually hired teachers, social workers, and all the needs that these kids have in their building and fix it, okay? We always think it's brighter on the other side, and we always never think about the consequences of some of the things that we do. And I'm not going to be faulting you guys because, you know, these things have been going on for years. But you guys are new, and you need to start thinking about these things, all right? Because when you fix one thing, there's another thing broken over here, all right? So, we have all our own out in school in dire need. You have to look at schools that's too close to each other. When we were growing up, we walked miles to school. We don't give our kids a chance to walk. They don't know their neighborhood. We need to get back into that neighborhood feeling where kids can walk to their building and feel good about it. I am going to this day to talk about chef because chef has destroyed our community in Hartford, all right? We paying all that money to go to suburban school? It's a waste of dollars. I feel if I'm a parent and I want to send my kids to suburban school, I should transport my kid to suburban school. And I have to say that because when my kid went to school, lived in this neighborhood, and go to school in the other side of town, I transport them. I did not put that burden on the school district to bus my kid into the neighborhood. So, you need to look at our transportation costs and what is costing us? Yeah, it's not every parent's going to like it. But you need to sit down and speak with these parents, let them understand we're in a dire time now. We have to do things when we're in dire time to fix things. Our children are needy. Most of them are needy. That's in our building right now, and they need that social worker. We can't afford to get rid of social worker, nurse, and teachers that are really needed. We have to make sure we decide and what the cost is going to be. Do we bus them, or do we put the resource, let them stay in their neighborhood? We need to decide on that, all right? We need to get rid of all these rental building that we have. We have enough empty school buildings now that we can put them in, all right? So, I'm hoping with the new contract coming up for the Board of Ed where you are in downtown, we can look at getting into one of these buildings. We have to come up with ideas, okay? So, let's think about what we need to do. We are in serious time statewide, everywhere. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. I'm going to call...I'm going to call the previous speaker again, just in case. Takianna Tucker. Angelica Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Angelica Rodriguez. I am a student at Adult Education Center on 110 Washington Street. We students need full-time teachers, especially in language arts and other GED classes. Because we are adults, we may need some additional help to get us back in the path of studying and school. It is the full-time teachers that have the time and take the time to give us this extra help we need. If the classes have just part-time teachers and have more students, these teachers would not have the time to give extra time to students. Unlike now, students will not get the individual help they need from these part-time teachers. For example, in writing, we all receive individual conferences to review our work. I realize that it was said that there are no afternoon students. Well, I am an afternoon student. My last class is from 1:00 to 2:00, and there are others in that class with me. In fact, many of my fellow students have passed the session of the class. I have learned a lot on this class. When I started language arts, I didn't know how to put an essay together or to do the kind of writing needed for the GED, like many other students. But now, we are learning how. Thank you for this opportunity.
Nikki Shaterton. Nikki Shaterton. Sorry, I'm not pronouncing it.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Shaterton. I am here before you again to urge you to keep our full-time teachers at Hartford Education Center. Last time I was here, it was said that there are no students in the building in the afternoon. Well, I am a student in the building every afternoon. Don't I count as someone? Some of my fellow students are here today, and they also did not like the fact that it was said that we were not there. When I came to Hartford Educational Center, it was the full-time teachers who made me feel welcome and that worked with me. It was the full-time teachers that I was able to go on when I had a problem or needed something. The part-time teachers are not the ones around to give the students all the extras they need. There is not a misunderstanding or a confusion going on with us students. We clearly understand what is happening here, and we are not agreeing with it. We want to keep our full-time teachers, and we want to see our school grow. What was told to you? It was said that there are no students in the afternoon. Are there few classes offered? We would like to see that changed. Finally, another important thing that was not said to you is that all the things these teachers do is beyond their call of duty. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Apolina Rosario.
How you doing? My name is Apolina Rosario from Hartford Adult Education. Okay, first of all, we want to...we want the full-time teachers and adult education. We want to say where the money going in our school. Although we are done interest in our future, we are never asked and never get choice. So, we do not never want to remember staff have the ability to work in a women using bathroom and refuse to leave. This happened more than one time, and this is a terrible... And we will no longer accept. We will stand up unto this tolerate. It is not being in the past. We will not allow this administration to continue to cover up this terrible behavior that was done place. We are...we are often made a feel unwelcome, and that is our present in the school doesn't never matter. We don't want to be made feel bad when we school service. We want the full-time...we would like to full use in this facility in the innings. Our training and our building, we should have a voice in our budget, how to the budget in the school. It is right that are accepted when we have paid assets. We need the full-time teachers that are flexible and able to work. We also now with schedule. We allow for more student to commit to adult education. For some of us, it's difficult to attend a class because we are working the schedule or unnecessary activity that we need to be able to asking care. We should have been asking about major changes to be to the budget that impacts deeply full-time teacher working as a lot of full-time support staff. Just happen, just hanging around using cellphone during the coffee break. We want to just in our feeling discipline. Some students that are not diverse or are not qualified to be having an equitable question acceptable. All adult programs decide a full-time to just working with us and enough to signal. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Katie Soler.
Muy buenas tardes. Creo que algunas personas no me van a entender porque no hablan completamente español. Okay, gracias. Okay, gracias.
Good afternoon, my name is Katie Soler, and I didn't realize I was gonna be able to translate. Hola, Katie.
Vengo en representación de los alumnos de la escuela de Hartford, de Adulton Education.
I am coming in with presentation of the students at Hartford Adult Ed.
Queremos que los maestros, son nuestras peticiones como alumnos.
These are our petitions as students.
Queremos que los maestros trabajen a tiempo completo en el centro de adulto, en el centro de educación para adultos, perdón.
We want our teachers to be full-time teachers at the Center for Adult Education.
Somos adultos y nos preocupamos por nuestro futuro.
We are adults and we are worried about our future.
Deseamos saber en qué se invierte el dinero que ingresa a nuestra escuela.
We would like to know how the money that arrives at our school, how it is invested.
Pues nunca se ha consultado con nuestra opinión para conocer las necesidades e inquietudes de los alumnos para mejorar la educación en nuestro centro de educación.
We have never been consulted about the needs and what, the needs and necessities of our school, so that we can be part of the decisions for what needs to happen at our school.
No estamos de acuerdo que un personal de miembro, del sexo masculino ingrese a nuestros baños de mujeres mientras nosotros estamos usandolos.
We are not comfortable with the fact that personnel, of male personnel, enter the female bathrooms while we are using them.
Porque es muy incómodo.
It is very uncomfortable.
Ya que esto ha sucedido varias veces en nuestra institución.
This has happened several times at our institution.
Sentimos que para Adulto Education Center in Hartford, nosotros somos alumnos y somos algo importante, ya que nuestra opinión no es tomada en cuenta.
We are students in adult education, and we consider ourselves important. But right now, we are feeling that our opinion is not important.
Necesitamos que nuestra informas, que nuestra formación sea más completa.
We need our instruction to be much more complete.
Implementando carreras certificadas para obtener un mejor empleo y así mejorar la calidad de vida de los alumnos.
Including short-term careers that will give us a certification, so that we are able to promote ourselves into a better high-paying salary, high-paying job with a better salary.
Queremos el pleno uso de las instalaciones por la noche.
We want to be able to use adult ed at night.
Hay personas que somos adultos y nos gusta hacer deporte.
There are some of us that even though we're adults, we like to do sports.
Y el gimnasio, la mayor parte del tiempo está cerrado por la noche. Tenemos que pagar para poder ingresar al gimnasio y poder hacer actividades de deporte.
The gym is not being used at night, and in order for us to have access to it, we have to pay. We would like to be able to use the gym to do sports.
Y por último.
Lastly.
Queremos justicia e imparcialidad para decidir que los estudiantes, que aunque no estén calificados, pueden ser aceptados de igual manera que los demás para aprender a hablar inglés.
Katie, te voy a pedir que vamos a ir esa parte despacito por despacito porque es muy importante, okay? I am going to take this part that she has just said, line by line, because it is very, very important. Dime la primera parte, me la puedes dar el papel, sí, gracias. Cuarta parte que leíste. Okay. We want justice and impartiality in deciding that students like us do not merit, or that we are not qualified to get a better education, is unacceptable. All of the education programs for adults merit that our teachers be full-time teachers, fully available to us. We are looking for a better quality of life, and with full-time teachers, we may be able to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay?
Elamin Alagab. Elamin Alagab. I'll come back to it. Uriel Silva. Susana Palace. Levy Cardulis.
Hello Superintendent, Board of Ed. Levy Cardulis, former head custodian at HTLA, Burns, and Buckley High School. First, I want to talk about my tenure at Buckley. When I got there in 2011, Buckley had its disadvantaged kids at the Voag, I wanna call them. But when I first got there, I told Mr. Padua, I said, "This facility is horrible." You know, the roof leaks like a colander, getting mice all over the place, squirrels. You got woodchucks that live at Buckley, and they would come inside the building, because it was the greenhouse. So we would have to get them out. So after the first year I was there, we moved all those kids back inside the big house, is what I called it. The Voag became storage. That's where I put all the furniture. So if a teacher needed some furniture, I had a place to go, get it real quick, come back to the big house, set you up. So, I think it was the year 2013, Slater, Bizano, and the infamous Hanau came in and said, "Oh, this is the best location for the New Visions program." And I was adamant, this is, this facility is not for children, period. This is storage, I mean, you need the new roof, you gotta do all the, you gotta re-point all the brick. I mean, it's a lot of work, before you put children in there, they didn't care. So just put these kids in here. So now we're talking about, when we are counting prison beds, this is the population. And like I said early on, I was at HTLA, I know some of you probably don't know what HTLA is. That was the special ed school, with the timeout rooms, take you down, assistance. These are the babies that are committing the most heinous crimes inside the city. And we're counting prison beds, and we don't look at this population. That facility, or at New Visions, is horrible. You have high school kids, there is no cafeteria, there is no gymnasium, there's no auditorium. You have three rooms, three, and this is where we send these children. I really believe we need to look hard at that. No, there's nothing to look at, let's move on, let's get them out, let's put them in a safe environment. Let's put them in an environment where they're gonna start learning, where they can be like real students, like every other student in the district. There's nothing to talk about, there's no data, no study, let's just do it. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, while I was at Buckley, it was another horrible building. And that's why I get upset with buildings and grounds, because they can't do anything. I got everything done, all my schools. But at Buckley, the auditorium was horrific, it was terrible. They had filing cabinets and furniture on the stage, forget about the chairs, looked terrible. So, we did the hustle, me and Mr. Padua, that I believe you guys treated unfairly, no question. We did the hustle, spent over a hundred thousand dollars in that auditorium. Right now, eight hundred and eighty-one seats, we've all been in there, you was just there. It's beautiful, we don't graduate there. We spend eighteen thousand dollars and go to sports medical science. This is what we do every single year since I've been at Buckley, which makes no sense, because as the head custodian, now I gotta take my custodian, we gotta get the pickup truck, we gotta bring Ralphie's special table down, we gotta do all of this stuff, instead of just bringing it down the corridor. And the facility, we just spent over a hundred thousand dollars in, that is absolutely beautiful. Eight hundred and eighty-one seats, more than enough for the students, the staff, and four tickets per child. Eighteen thousand dollars we spend to tailor rental, every year to go to sports science. And then where does sports science graduate from? And really quick, I know my time is up, but if, in regards to the budget, building managers, we need to get rid of completely, we need to look at the office of portfolio, the financial department, which is like a small school, when you look at the staff that's in there. Let, Dr. Torres, let's put students first, thank you.
Calvin Hood.
Good evening, community leaders and fellow community members. Paraphrasing our mayor, Hartford needs to grow jobs. I am C. Hood. I am at the upper end of the first very large generation in America. It is our obligation to ensure that we give the following generation every opportunity to become productive members of our home Hartford. The Adult Education Center, Washington Street, is a vital part of our community. It provides growth, productivity, and self-esteem needed by its students. Growth is in numbers and accomplishments. My personal experience as a student testifies to the importance of the school. I have witnessed many students attending, and how they have sacrificed their personal time and lives. Often, the number of students in attendance fill the classrooms available. Hartford Adult Education Center, Washington Street, is placing back in our community, in our neighborhood, the manpower, woman power, and people power, need to make sure that Hartford maintains its position of leadership in our state, thus providing a variety of productive activities for our state. Self-esteem is crucial, it's vital for survival. Dropping out of school, not being able, not being in a position to help itself or anyone else, is not good. The students play, students display a varied age level, social substance, and ethnic grouping. The teachers address and help them with speaking English or the second language, to learn to become a citizen, American citizenship. To even think of cutting back on that which is solely needed by the community, is unacceptable. Especially when it comes to the full, the few full-time teachers. We need our school, we need to know we are accepted and are being prepared to live a better life. The number of students is there, the dedication of the full-time teacher is evident of their concern. The need for Hartford Adult Education Center on Washington Street is there with the teachers we need. Now we need the help of our community leaders to make sure that our school is there. Cutting back on that help is a disservice to Hartford. The school has a number and dedicated staff. We, the students, need you, our leaders, to do the right thing. Thank you.
Leonard Bassey.
Gravenor, my name is Leonard Bassey. I am back before you again to urge you to keep full-time teachers at Hartford Adult Education. These are the teachers that we need and want. Since we pay the tax that supports this school and the district, we should have a say in what affects our education. As indicated in the petition I presented you with at last, last meeting, over five hundred people feel the same way I do. The last time I was, I was here, someone said that there, there are no student in the building in the afternoon. Well, that is not just true, that is not, that is not true. I am at the school almost every afternoon, aren't I someone? I have science class in afternoon, then I go to tutoring after that. I often go see one of, one of the full-time teachers for help or question, if he has time, because many time he has student waiting to see him. Also, we are not told that there is just one GED class in afternoon. There was also talk at the, there was also talk at the, at the last meeting of opening, opening up more suite in around the series. Why this may offer an opportunity for some, for some, this should not come at the expense of the school. This suite, this suite don't have, don't have same offering opportunity as our school. This suite of have one part-time teacher trying to teach our subject, this does not work, for me and for many others. Why this suite may work for someone who just need tutoring, they do not work for someone who really need to be taught. We are continue to lift up our voice higher and higher until, until our voice are heard. We are continue to ask for a guidance from Almighty God, knowing that He will continue to guide us and help lead you to what is right. We are the, we are requesting, we are requesting is such a small request, and it come from our very people who support, who support the district. I want to leave example, as an example of what happened today, how it was handled. Two of our part-time teachers were not present for the whole day. Who handled the situation? My language teacher, it was, it was him to handle the all, all students sending some to the lab while working with others in park, in park and classroom. No other staff member helped or got involved. This is the kind of leadership you are thinking about calling. This are the type of leadership you are thinking about calling. Please, listen to us, so that we can be able to make a good parents as we go to school, and be able to get a good, a good, a good job. Don't call this teacher, don't call them, because when we do that, they are not going to have all the time to spend with us. They will have another job, and when they have another part-time job somewhere, they are not going to have time to give all to us. Thank you so much.
Margaret Plaganis.
Good afternoon and buenas tardes. My name is Margaret Plaganis, and as I look at you, I see my former students arrayed for multicultural day on the stage of MD Fox Elementary, where I was privileged to teach art from pre-K to grade five for ten years. I started on September of nine eleven. And at that time, the budget for eight hundred students' art supplies was one dollar and seventy-five cents per child per year. That was the best budget year. Since that time, I sustained the art department supplies by stealing, bartering, budgeting, sharing, and eliciting partnerships with neighborhoods, parents, and other kinds of community endeavors. Advocating for my students became a passion when I realized that not only did art keep them engaged in learning other skills like English language learning, and numeracy, and literature, and culture of their house, and home, and neighborhood, but they were motivated to continue learning by going down the street to the library that offered open doors and sustained their interest in literacy and learning and art in afternoon programs, also the boys and girls clubs. Also, at the time I was searching for resources, I became an advocate for Hartford performs. Suspicious of where money might be going away from my students, I attended formative planning.
And although arts education was not our mission, Hartford Public Schools needed a partner to execute their plan, not a vendor or not a contractor for hire. A partnership was clearly crucial for the children of Hartford. And so I persuaded the Greater Hartford Arts Council Board to become the fiscal agent for funding, at which time was 100% through the Hartford Public Schools budget. With that significant investment, our joint commitment was to continue to raise additional funding from other sources so that all students in Hartford Public Schools could be afforded the opportunity to achieve, to achieve success as a result of this innovative programming, which is designed and delivered with maximum effectiveness. That mission was accomplished, and Hartford performs is now its own 501(c)(3), delivering arts integrations, arts integration in 32 schools. The mission of Hartford performs continues to be in lockstep with the mission of Hartford Public Schools, its creator. Since inception, we have been able to significantly leverage the initial funding with multiple private and public contributions. So Hartford Public Schools' financial support for this critical educational programming is now 50% of the total budget to provide arts integration to all students pre-K through eight, as well as professional development for the teachers and the principals. Continued support at this level is really crucial to our joint ability to further our mission, and it's also imperative that our outside funders see Hartford Public Schools' sustained financial commitment for Hartford performs, or we will risk their withdrawing their matching investments with the assumption that the public-private partnership is no longer valued. I understand fiscal responsibility is paramount to the city of Hartford, as it is to all of us, as is holistic support for student learning and ultimate success of the entire system. We have built together, what we've built together is a quality and highly cost-effective method of delivery. I respectfully request that as partners, we jointly find a way to stay the course. Thank you for your consideration.
Javitsa Rivera?
Hello, good afternoon, Superintendent, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, and fellow board members. I hope you all have had a great day. My name is Javitsa Rivera, and I am a student at Hartford Adult Education. I stand bef, before you in hopes that you can wholeheartedly understand our goals as students. I speak on behalf of myself and my fellow students, as well as on behalf of our amazing teachers. I ask of you, may we please do all in our power together to not put a stop to any fundings for classes or cut teachers who have worked so hard. We learn a lot from each other, but without our teachers, we may not have the necessary tools to succeed, exceed, or surpass in our studies. Our teachers gave us all motivation, inspiration, knowledge, courage, wisdom, and power to help us get closer to the dreams we worked so hard for, to prosper and become success, successful, as well as growing life. I ask, if possible, please provide our teachers with the funding we need so that they can help us continue to grow. We need our teachers working full-time because they are the key to making us students and school grow and prosper in life. Please don't cut our teachers to anything less than full-time, for we need them to do the job they've done for so long and worked so hard for, as they are the ones who are brave enough to change the world in the best ways they've been doing. We all, we all need our GED diplomas to exceed. Downsizing will not help with that progress. It's an amazing feeling to receive recognition awards because our full-time teachers take the time to empower us students with these recognitions. Full-time teachers have worked hard and have made a better community. My experiences with my teachers have empowered me. They have taught me to be positive and not doubtful, to be optimistic and not fearful, to be determined and never defeated. Last but not least, a truly great mentor is hard to find, difficult to part with, and impossible to forget. To you, I say thank you so much, for you have helped me grow in life, work, school, and many other areas in my life. I've learned, I've helped, I've grown, and thanks to you, I continue to grow. Thanks again. I know I cannot mention my teachers, but I'd like to say thank you to the board members and thank you to all the teachers and staff at our school who are, who care enough and work hard enough to help us become who we'd like to become, successful people in life and live a better life for ourselves, our youth, and helping make a better world. Thanks again, Javitsa Rivera. Thank you.
Michael Downs?
Good evening, board members, Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street, in the northeast section of Hartford. I wanted to speak on the budget. Starting in 1995, the Board of Education wanted to save some money, so they gave the system away to a private company. This lasted 10 months. They gave them several million dollars, probably 150, 200,000, 200 million dollars at that time. And they walked away with it, they couldn't account for it, and we were left holding the bag. And around 1998, 99, they gave the system away to the Board of Education at the time, and the mayor and the city council gave the system away to the state. The state wanted it, and they did what they wanted to do, and they ended up eliminating middle schools from 2002 to 2009. They also laid off a significant number of special education teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, phys ed teachers, music teachers, art teachers, bilingual teachers, and adult ed teachers. And also vocational technical education was all, was eliminated. And much of that was, some of the teachers were rehired because they had to be, the state stepped in and said, "You gotta have a certain number." But they didn't hire them all back, and this was all in the, under the guise of saving money. My question is, where is the money? I realize many of you on the board here were in school at that time, so it's not, not your fault, except for one I know was a teacher, and he fought with me to, to, against these cuts, and we were unsuccessful. And these cuts were made, of course, to save money. So, but I challenge you to find out where that money went. It had to go somewhere, and we, we should have, we should be loaded with money. We shouldn't be fighting for, to make our budget balance. We should be loaded with money, because we have nothing, we have nothing to offer the students, we have nothing to offer the adult ed students, nothing to offer vocational technical students. And our, in, in most cases, our athletic programs are, are defunct or inadequate. Music programs, you've got other, other cities around me, using, they have music extravagances, they have art extravagances. We used to have them in the city, don't have them anymore. And it's because we're, we're not teaching our, our students, we want to emphasize English and math, that's good. Emphasize English and math. But it's not hard to emphasize how to add, subtract, multiply, and divide, and then teach, teach, teach from there. And, and also to teach the, the basic grammar and how to write a sentence, then a paragraph, and possibly a 100-word essay by the time kids get out of high school. But they should be able to look forward to recreation and, and athletics, and music, and art, and all the, and there's no clubs anywhere. I don't see any clubs around, even in the high schools, there's very few clubs. So, take a look around, and, and, and you remember when you were in school, and they had all these things. They don't have them now. We don't have them in this, other towns around us do. We're the only, one of the very few municipalities in the state of Connecticut that doesn't have a middle school system. That's awful. Thank you.
I'm going to call the three names that, from before, just to see if they're, they're here now. El Amin Elagab? Uriel Silva? Susanna Palas? Okay. That concludes public hearing, and pretty much, we're done. Does anyone, any board member have anything? Sam, I know there's some questions, but, any questions? No? Okay. Me?